Brienne, I think we have everyone and we're good to go here in chambers.
Okay, sounds great. All right, welcome everyone to a study session today for City Council. And I have to leave early. Councilmember Keneer is going to take over for me in a little bit. But we are going to have an interview of Matt Jensen for Hotel Advisory Committee. And then we're going to hear, have Melissa Morrison, our Initiative Manager in Housing and Homelessness, introduce some people to talk to us about Vision Zero and the Anchor Project. And then I don't really know that we have much on budget and ERP for today, and I won't be here for that section. But I'll start with you, Matt. It's so great to have you. Matt works... Well, you'll have to introduce yourself, Matt. I don't know your exact title. I just associate you with all the Davenport Suite of Properties.
Suite of Properties.
I've worked with Matt many years, business up in Spokane. And looking forward, Matt, if you could just tell us a little bit about yourself and your interest in this position and role, then people will have a few questions for you.
Well, great, thank you. It's nice to see everyone. I do recognize a few faces there. But again, my name's Matt Jensen, and I've been nominated by the Spokane Hotel Motel Association for the position of the Hotel and Motel Commissioner, I guess, representing our hotel community. I'm the Corporate Director of Sales and Marketing for Davenport Hotels, which includes five hotels here in Spokane. The Historic Davenport, the Davenport Grand, the Tower, the Luso, and then the Centennial. And for this position, I think I was really kind of representing the Centennial Hotel more than anything, just because we purchased that hotel back in 2018, and we were hoping to have a little more of a presence, I think, in our community with that hotel now that we've got it renovated and it's kind of up to speed. And so I'll be kind of representing that hotel through this position. But I'm excited and honored to be considered for this. I'm a 34-year veteran in this industry. Twenty of those years have been in Spokane. Started when I reopened the, helped Walt Worthy reopen the Historic Davenport here in downtown Spokane. And gosh, that was, you know, four-plus hotels ago. So there's a lot that's happened since then, and I'm just excited to be part of this process. So, thank you.
And Councilmember Wilkerson?
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Hi, Matt, and welcome.
Hi, Matt, and welcome.
I will have to say I have probably visited all of the properties that you just identified, most recently the Centennial during the summer for that great pool. Matt, what do you see as the biggest challenge in this industry going forward?
Great question. You know, just off the top, right now, it's got to be a similar issue that a lot of companies are having, and that's staffing. You know, the demand for the hotels has started to come back in different segments. The leisure travel has picked up pretty health, it's at a very healthy pace right now. But conventions are starting to trickle back a little bit. Corporate travel is still pretty much, you know, pretty nonexistent. So there's segments that are coming back finally after 18 long months of a pandemic. But now it's just finding the workforce to help service the guest rooms, the restaurants, the banquet events as we start to come back. So that's probably our biggest challenge in front of us right now. Next year does look like it's going to be a very healthy year in hospitality for at least the downtown hotels. A lot of our conventions got moved out of 2020 into 21, and then from 21, we've moved them now into 22. So we're looking to have a pretty stellar convention group here next year, which is good. So that sense of urgency is becoming even more important in finding staff to help, you know, manage and service that business as it comes back. And our little beautiful, little, I shouldn't say little, big podium is opening here in October, and that's going to be another huge infusion of business into downtown, which we're very thankful and excited about. The Sports Commission's gotten off to a great start in pre-booking that facility as well. So that's kind of on top of all of our other conventions and groups that are at the convention center and in our hotels. So, yeah, so I would say, front and center, it's got to be staffing is our biggest challenge.
Any other questions for Matt?
Questions for Matt?
All right, I'm not seeing any. Matt, thanks.
Matt, thanks.
And we'll be voting on this, but you don't have to show up for the vote. We'll let you know. And for your service. Okay, I would like to officially, I'm going to turn this over to Councilmember Keneer to run the meeting. I'll be listening for a while before I have to go to my next meeting. And then she'll introduce Melissa Morrison, who will introduce our other guests. Councilmember Keneer, it's all yours.
Okay, we'll miss you. Thanks for introductions. Melissa, do you want to, Melissa Morrison, who is our housing person for City Council, do you want to introduce our guests and start us off?
Yes, so we have United Way here. Morgan and Andre, they are working on the Functional Zero Initiative, which I thought would be very interesting for council to hear about some of the good work that's going on in the community that's really making impacts on homelessness in Spokane, in the city and the region. I do know that we get a lot of, you know, questions and emails from the community asking about the Functional Zero approach, because every once in a while, we see a city that, you know, headlines of that the city has reached functional, you know, zero for a certain population. And so it's some of the work that's going on in Spokane, and I think that council will be really excited to learn about what's going on and some of the next steps in going forward. So I will turn it over to United Way, because I think they'll have a great presentation.
Thank you very much, Melissa. I'm going to try and share my screen here. If I can figure out how to do that. And I am here with Cecily Ferguson, who is the Anchor Community Initiative Coordinator, as well as Andre, who is our supervisor at United Way. Cecily and I both work within a kind of interesting position, that we are employed by United Way, and that is where we are kind of doing, centering a lot of our work, but we work within the CHHS department as well, so we can collaborate with both of those. Today, we're going to be talking about the Anchor Community Initiative and Built for Zero, which our team has affectionately just named the Functional Zero Initiative, because they both go by the same approach in how we're doing the work, though there are some differences in population and where we are in the strategic movement forward. So an agenda for us this morning is we're going to do some introduction into what Functional Zero is and talk about the elements of Functional Zero, while incorporating Built for Zero and Anchor Community Initiative examples, and then look ahead and allow some time for questions at the end, if that works for all of you.
Great, thank you. I'll just check in. Can folks hear me? Okay, cool. Apologies, my camera is not working today. But thanks so much for having us. I'm really excited to talk with you all today. A quick just kind of explanation of when we say the Anchor Community Initiative and Built for Zero, who we're talking about when it comes to populations in our community. So the Anchor Community Initiative focuses on youth and young adults, 12 to 24, experiencing homelessness or housing instability. Morgan, will you give a brief description of the populations Built for Zero is working with?
Yeah, Built for Zero works with kind of two different population subsets. So we're focused on our veterans that are experiencing homelessness, as well as our single adults who are experiencing homelessness. Right now, with a special emphasis on our chronic single adults, so individuals that meet status for chronicity, which is, they have 12 months or four periods of homelessness that equal 12 months in a three-year period, and have a disabling condition. So that is kind of our chronic status, as well as our veterans.
Thanks, Morgan. So for context on that, with our youth and young adults, veterans and singles on board, that's three of our, three of our five sub-populations that are using the Functional Zero methodology to work towards reducing and ending homelessness in our community. So some really important elements of what Functional Zero is and what we do when we do this work in our community. So we're going to detail out what these four are and give you some examples, both from the Anchor Community Initiative and Built for Zero. But to give a quick overview, our four key elements are: one, having an integrated command center team. So having stakeholders from across the community working together to reduce and end homelessness and to be data-driven. A second core element is having community-level measurement. You're going to hear us talk a lot about this. We're data-driven, data-informed, and really excited at the innovation and the progress we've been able to make in this area in Spokane. That leads right into number three here, of having comprehensive, real-time by-name data, which is a really important piece of this work. We cannot measure progress towards reducing if we aren't confident in the information that we hold and knowing that that information is reflective of the experiences of our community members. And four, being strategic and data-driven in our housing investment. So looking at homelessness as a community-wide issue, and as such, looking for community-wide solutions. So to jump into some more examples, we're going to kind of walk through the way that we see, you know, issues and then how Functional Zero approaches this approach to these issues. So one of the main things that we see often in approaches to reducing and ending homelessness, that no single actor is fully accountable for ending homelessness in a community. We all hold our own small piece of the solution, and we need to be able to have our eyes on the prize, right? Like be able to have everything and know how the pieces fit together. So the solution to that is having an integrated command center team. So having key agencies like the COC, our Housing Authority, local government, VA, working together every week towards a shared definition. So for us, and Morgan on the next slide, we have our, what this looks like for the Built for Zero and ACI. So our command teams for Built for Zero, Morgan, do you want to run through that?
Yeah, so our command teams for Built for Zero are broken up into, again, our two population-specific groups. So our chronic and singles, we have the Built for Zero Work Group, which is a smaller group out of the single subcommittee that's made up of about eight members. That kind of has the high-level knowledge of what the Built for Zero model is. And then our single subcommittee from the COC, which both of these are made up of VOA adult programs, Goodwill, Hen, Catholic Charities, Integrated Case Management, and Shelter, SNAP, and Transitions for Women. And then for our veterans, it's the Veteran Leadership Subcommittee, and then some improvement teams that are kind of based off of that or kind of outshoots of it that work on specific projects and then come back. And that's made up of VOA, GPD, Healthcare for Homeless Veterans, Goodwill, SSVF, which stands for Supportive Services for Veteran Family, and Pierce Spokane.
Awesome. So the ACI, our kind of core team are the folks that we're in constant contact with and have been working with in the past two-plus years. And we have a core team that meets every two weeks, and it's made up of kind of all the folks that you see listed after that. We also work with the subcommittee. We partner really closely with the Youth Advisory Board. So the YAB Chair is a person with lived experience and a voting member on the COC Board. And YAB is a body of young people with lived experience in housing instability or homelessness that consult on this work continually. We work with VOA, SNAP, Catholic Charities, our Singles and Family Coordinated Entry System, our Foster Care System, you know, for youth and young adults, our Foster Care System, as well as Juvenile Justice, Behavioral Health in Schools, our major systems of care. So they're partners at our table, and we're at theirs as well. And then based on specific community projects or priorities, we also work with other community partners who have content expertise that we don't have. So a good example of that is Spectrum Center. So we partnered with Spectrum to offer gender identity and sexual orientation training for direct service providers. Similarly, we worked with Teen Child on identifying some issues with the Juvenile Justice System and pathways to start to address it. We know these systems of care are large, complex, and confusing, so we need in this work on our command teams. We need folks with expertise, and that's part of what these initiatives offer, is a convening space for people to come together and the capacity to organize around that. So that's what Morgan and I positions are here to do. All right, on to the next.
Yeah, so then our second problem that we really see is funders evaluate success on the performance of individual housing programs and not on whether a community collectively reduces homelessness. And as we have mentioned, and you probably are all aware, single programs do not get us to a Functional Zero or to Zero homelessness. A whole community is what really gets us there. So the Functional Zero solution is community-level measurement. So we measure success by the total number of people experiencing homelessness, not by single program outcomes. And data enables us to rapidly test new ideas and understand if those efforts are working. One of Built for Zero and the Anchor Community Initiative's favorite question is what can we do by next Tuesday, or the Tuesday test? Is this a small enough scale change that we can try something in the next week and then be able to scale it up or down depending on how it's working? So we don't need to employ massive systems changes, but rather small systemic and pointed changes, and then allow the data to show us if it's working or not. So in that, you may ask, like, what does it mean to get to Functional Zero? Or how do we measure that through our data? And I find that this graphic really helps explain that. So we have our inflow numbers that we identify through our by-name list, which is our newly identified individuals experiencing homelessness, individuals that have returned from housing and returned from an unknown or an inactive status, meaning they haven't engaged with the system in the last 90 days. And that is what creates our actively homeless numbers once we subtract our outflow, which is people who have moved into permanent housing placement, people who have moved inactive, so they haven't made system contact in the last 90 days, or people who don't, no longer meet population criteria, which would be if they are a single and then they become part of a family or they're expecting a child, they no longer meet the system criteria for the singles by name list and move into the family system. So Functional Zero is achieved for a population when their inflow is less than or equal to their outflow, which means that we are able to house the number of people coming into our system on a monthly basis, meaning that we're not actually getting to a exact zero number, but that we've created a system that can meet the needs of every person who comes into it.
Thanks, Morgan. And actually, would you stop sharing for a sec? So I can really quickly show the ACI resource hub and what this looks like for our community?
Yes, let me figure out how to do that. Sorry, I am not sure.
Yeah, I always get confused where my WebEx Stop Sharing is. Okay. So we often get asked, okay, what is, when we talk about data, what do we mean, this data in live time? And this is something that we've been working on for a while. So we report our monthly numbers, and we can get, we're going to talk more about what this looks like. But I want to give you a snapshot of how our community can use this. So in the Anchor Community Initiative, we report every month, and we have all sorts of different things that we report on. And then can, as a community, be looking at our data. And this data is accessible to our community, so I'll be sure to pass along this information. And there's no personally identifying information here. But we can look over time at how many young people, and this is specific to youth and young adults, are experiencing unsheltered homelessness and what this looks like. We can look at shelters, how many folks are taking advantage of our shelter system, doubled-up or couch surfing over time. And then we also are able to look at this, both in aggregate, but break it down into different demographic levels. So looking at race and ethnicity,
Right, totally.
gender identity and sexual orientation. So I'd love to be able to give you all a tour of this. Let me know if that would be, if that would be helpful at some point. But I wanted to keep your interest in what's available here.
So before you go on, so where do you capture that data from? How is that captured?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we, part of this partnership with stakeholders in our community is we work with the CMIS team in the city. So all of that information is pulled from HMIS or CMIS. So we rely on information that service providers are already entering into the database and are required to enter in order to pull that information. So Morgan, can you bring up the next slide? Because I think that'll start to answer more of this question. Thank you so much for that question.
Can I have a follow-up question here, too? Are we looking at just the city of Spokane? Are we looking at the county? What is your range?
Yeah, so the Anchor Community Initiative is focused on the counties. So that data is pulled from any county program or organization using state, local, state, or federal dollars and are required to use CMIS. So that is countywide data for us. Great. And so this leads kind of directly to that, the thing that you've identified is where does this information come from? And so this is, this is one of the core pieces of the problem that, Morgan, we go back really quick. The problem that we identify is, you know, we all, I think, are familiar with the point-in-time count, which is a once-a-year count of a problem that, as we know, homelessness is rather dynamic and changes night by night. Annual street counts can be helpful as a snapshot, right? But getting to zero means we need to know how people are coming in and out of our system and what that movement looks like. So that's where the solution comes in, of having comprehensive, real-time by-name data. And so we know in real-time by name the folks experiencing homelessness, and that this allows us to really tailor solutions for individuals, but also as a community, as those needs change. So what does this mean? In the next slide. We have a by-name list. So that information is pulled from our by-name list. And the by-name list is a real-time, comprehensive list of everyone experiencing homelessness or housing instability. That information comes from the Homeless Management Information System, like I said. So our providers like Catholic Charities, Volunteers of America, SNAP, are all using the system anyways. And what Functional Zero is doing, or the ACI and Built for Zero, is building a custom database and report that allows us to pull this information and be able to swiftly, accurately, and quickly manipulate it to better understand what's happening in our community. So as we said, most BNLs are created in local homeless management information systems to ensure compliance with privacy regulations. And what is a by-name list? So it includes all the information in detail of a person experiencing homelessness that's gathered at that point of entry or point of service. And you can see a little bit more of what that means there. What's really important is what we use this for. So it helps us create a shared sense of responsibility to find housing for every unique person. Every person has unique needs, and this allows us to see each person. It allows us to improve case conferencing by having specific and updated details about what's happening for each person. Case conferencing allows providers to come together, to remain compliant with those data privacy standards, but be working in a community on behalf of a person towards their goals. It can quickly illuminate data collection quality and reliability issues. So the by-name list in the youth and young adult world has helped us really identify where we had data management practices that weren't serving our community and to work with those providers to establish better practices, which led us to better understand what young people need and act accordingly. It helps us ensure that all people are matched to the resources they need. So that includes LGBTQ and people of color who we know are overrepresented but underserved. Having a data tool like this allows us to be really clear and really specific in where we need to be doing better and where our opportunities for improvement are, and the opportunities of improvement based on those individual folks. It also allows us to highlight housing gaps in our community and really advocate to fill those specific gaps, not just guesses based on a once-a-year count. So an example of that is the recent Young Adult Shelter. We were able to identify and notice, you know, a pretty large number of young people sleeping rough or sleeping unsheltered each night in our community, who did not feel safe accessing an adult shelter. We were able to use that information and advocate within our region to bring a young adult shelter here. And because of that, we have seen a reduction, a pretty dramatic reduction in the number of young people experiencing unsheltered homelessness. And that was a data-driven advocacy request, also using the advocacy and experiences of young people saying what they needed.
So one of the things, so the data that Cecily showed you is also available for our veteran population, and we're working to make it available, we're working on creating our by-name list for our singles population. Cecily has been working with the Anchor Community Initiative, going on, finishing up their second year, where the Built for Zero community has been working on this for about a year and a half with my position coming on board in the last four months. So we are working to get that data for all three of these populations that we have equitable ways of showing and looking at disproportionality across the board. So what do we use that data for and how do we track it? So we look for using real-time data in communities to tell us if the system change are having an impact on a month-to-month basis. And one of the ways that we do that is looking for a shift, which is six months of data points below a system baseline, which is called our improvement median, and is represented by this line right here, the reddish line. And so if we have six months of continuous data below that improvement median, we can tell that we're actually making a change, rather than a shorter period of impact, which we don't know if that is based off of the weather or based off of some other factor that's not in our system change control.
So an example of this, we're really excited in Spokane. We have a measurable reduction in the number of young people experiencing homelessness. So as you can see in our data here, the total number of young people experiencing homelessness, we had our improvement median set at 239, and the goal was to, you know, reduce this over time. And you can see here in our data that we have successfully produced a reduction in the number of youth and young adults experiencing homelessness. I'll talk a little bit more in a minute here about how we did that.
And then if you look at our Built for Zero data with our veterans, we can see that from, first, we can see that from September of 2020 to September of 2021, we have a 17.5% reduction in Built for Zero. And that's using two different types of improvements that we'll get to in the end, one of which is just having this data available, and the second of which is case conferencing and utilizing this data for case conferencing. Something else that you can see is that we're currently halfway to a shift with our veteran population, because we have three data points that are under our improvement median here of 100. This chart will also show you, on the bottom, is our number of chronic veterans, which we're specifically focusing on, and is continuing to steady out, but, which is not what we hope to see, but is not growing. So that's something that we're tracking, and we're able to use this data to make improvements for our veterans experiencing homelessness.
Really exciting stuff that's happening in Built for Zero, and we're really excited. And I think some folks here were at our community update and heard this announcement that Spokane is the first community in Washington State to measurably and sustainably reduce youth and adult homelessness. We are also the third in the nation behind Built for Zero communities like Rockford, Illinois, Gulf Coast, to reach this milestone. And, but we're the first in the nation of our size to measurably reduce youth and adult homelessness, which is a really exciting thing. On our next slide, you can see a bit, this is an annotated timeline of how we think we did this and how we got to where we are. We have a case study that the Spokane ACI just released. So I will send that to you, which has a lot more detail about how we went about this. But I think this is a helpful graphic. which has a lot more detail about how we went about this, but I think this is a helpful graphic to start to get a sense of all the work that led into this, and I think pretty instructive for the work ahead for Built for Zero. And then another kind of example of what we see as an impact here. I mentioned earlier that we saw quite a reduction in the number of young people experiencing unsheltered homelessness. Here's a bit more information about what that looks like and how we got there. So you can see in February 2021, we had a bit of a spike, up to around thirty-seven young people experiencing unsheltered homelessness. That's also where we were pretty successfully able to advocate and use this data to secure bringing a young adult shelter here. And you can see from there what the impact of that has been in serving youth and young adults. And then in this next one, part of this work, or part of this initiative work, is having communities set goals, set community-wide goals around what we're trying to do, and I'll be pulling in that direction. The ACI set a goal back in May 2020 that we wanted to increase our housing placements by thirty percent. So we worked with the core team and across stakeholders to try to achieve this. And you can see again where we started with our improvement median and where we've been able to increase our housing places across our system, not just in one particular program, which is really, really exciting to see.
So the third problem that we want to kind of go into, or the fourth problem, excuse me, is housing supply paralysis. So expanding housing resources are crucial, as we've had many conversations across this city about. But many cities have dramatically expanded their housing supply without making a dent in homelessness. And one of the reasons is that they never fixed the housing system, right? So part of the Functional Zero approach is we've seen communities count up for years, count up to eighty people housed, count up to a hundred people housed, but never see an impact in changing the actual system. So the Functional Zero approach is rather than counting up to how many people we can house, it's counting down to how we can make sure that nobody is, that homelessness is rare, brief when it happens and never becomes a way of life. So we use strategic data-driven housing investment. So Functional Zero communities use real-time data to secure the housing resources they need and target them for the greatest possible reduction in homelessness. And we have two different examples of how we're doing that here in Spokane. Again, we're going to use ACI data because we've had that and it's been going on for a little bit longer, but we are doing these different kind of improvement projects in both Built for Zero and ACI communities. So case conferencing happens in all four of our sub-populations, but we focus on it, and it's part of the initiatives in three of them. So youth and young adult case conferencing happens on a weekly basis and currently prioritizes sheltered and, or unsheltered and QT BIPOC youth and young adults. This is a chance for all of our community members who are serving this population to come together and talk about their clients as people and see what different resources we can leverage. Because again, it's not one agency's client, it is our community's client. We also have these case conferencing meetings for our singles and veterans, which happen on a bi-weekly basis, so that they're happening every week, but we focus on different populations, two weeks a month. So singles case conferencing happens on the second and fourth week of the month and currently prioritizes people experiencing chronic homelessness. And our veterans case conferencing happens on the first and third week of the month and currently prioritizes veterans experiencing chronic and unsheltered homelessness. And that number is actually down to around twenty-five individuals, which we had talked about chronic veterans earlier, and that's a number that we can, we think that we can solve their housing insecurity and get them housed measurably.
So Morgan, that's to hear. Where are these meetings taking place? I mean, are we still virtual or this group that's coming together? Go a little bit into how that's working.
Yeah, so at this point, they are still virtual, and we have found that while some parts of our community are opening back up to in-person, virtual allows greater accessibility for agencies across our community because it doesn't involve the commuting time. So the veterans case conferencing meeting is housed with Goodwill SSVS, and some of their case managers take the lead on that, supported by me. And then our singles case conferencing is supported by our coordinated entry system and is an hour and a half every week that focuses on time for networking across different providers, time for them to bring clients that they're currently struggling to get housed or moved into the next step of the housing process, as well as individuals that we've pinpointed from our by-name list.
And for youth and young adults, we have a community coordinator position at Volunteers of America, who also oversees our centralized diversion fund I'll talk about in a sec. And we host that weekly as well, virtually, so it's facilitated by a VOA staff, but community members are invited across whoever's working with young people. I think also something to note, Morgan, we go back to the other slide real quick. So these prioritization methods here, so unlike in coordinated entry where we have, you know, pretty clear rules and regulations about how we can and cannot prioritize certain populations, especially those that we know to be more vulnerable, like our queer, trans, black, indigenous, people of color. But in case conferencing, we're able to do that a little bit differently. So you can see here that each of these case conferencing groups have set their own prioritization metric around how they want to prioritize and assess vulnerability for people. So in the youth and young adult world, we know that our queer, trans, black, indigenous, youth of color are largely overrepresented, and so we felt it was important as a way to address disproportionality to be sure that we were focusing on those young people specifically, and same thing with unsheltered. So what, I think what's impactful there is those were community-based decisions that the community had to come together, discuss, and agree upon. And in the youth and young adult world, we've actually changed our prioritization metric two times now to shift and flex to the needs of young people and to what the community's feedback was about case conferencing and where they wanted or needed support. So these meetings are really dynamic, and it's become a really important convening spaces for us to not only talk about specific folks experiencing homelessness, but for providers to be working together and sharing resources.
So this is, I have a quick question, and we're hearing a lot from our business community that they want to get involved and help out. Now, we don't know whether that's with dollars or with time, they haven't said. Is there a mechanism, is there a point of entry for them to get involved in helping with this effort and getting involved to actually reduce the number of people that are homeless?
I think absolutely. We'd be really excited and I think would love to have a conversation with you all and maybe the leadership from these different groups about what would be helpful. I think, you know, Morgan and I act as coordinators and conveners in this, and so we'd want to be respectful and responsive, so what our service providers are saying they might need from the business community. But I think that would be a really exciting partnership, and we absolutely have ways that we would love to work with our business community around reducing and ending. And actually, an example of that might be coming up here with the centralized diversion fund. So an example of a bit of what this work has led to and where we've learned about innovations in this work and what has been really effective in housing folks, and this might again be an opportunity for where we could use some more community support for where other community stakeholders can see some real value in their involvement. One of the things that in the Anchor Community Initiative, we've really worked on over the past year and is getting started here in Built for Zero very soon, is the advent of the centralized diversion fund. So the centralized diversion fund was a public-private partnership between the Office of Homeless Youth and some private philanthropy dollars to create a flexible funding pot based in our community to eliminate barriers for young people to safe and stable housing. This fund is flexible, so unlike a housing program where you have to meet certain eligibility and then there's expectations around case management, this diversion really flips that and asks, what are your strengths? What are you bringing and where are you hoping to go? Often the barriers that we see for folks, you know, we do, based on population, it's always case by case for sure. But especially given what we know about our current housing crisis, oftentimes really flexible and responsive funding can be a stabilizing force in a way that other things cannot. So the CDF has been a major factor in us seeing this reduction. We've served one hundred and thirty-six additional households that otherwise would not have been served by our coordinated entry system. Our average cost per household to stabilize was about $1,493. Our median processing time, and I really want to underscore this, is two days. So by the time someone puts in a request, within two days, we have a check out the door. So it is possible to be responsive and to act as emergently as the need. And you can see some of our most common fund type requests here. Our strength of this is that providers from across the community can be trained to access, including faith-based providers and systems of care, so it doesn't rely on one organization to be everywhere. It relies on partnership and information sharing. And that also allowed us to be really targeted in where we deploy this resource and use it in case conferencing. So in the next slide, you can see a little bit of what the success of this has looked like. Ninety-two percent of households were successfully diverted from homelessness, and ninety-six percent have not returned to homelessness within three months using the CDF. This also has been an incredible tool for us to address disproportionality. You can see there that fifty-eight percent of young people served through the CDF have been young people of color. And then you can also see the cost breakdown there of a diversion versus stay in emergency shelter and versus rapid rehousing. All of this information is pulled from a recent centralized diversion fund report. We'll be sure to follow up with that, so you can get some more information here. I think it's also really important to look at the journey of young people through diversion, so looking at where they started and where they're going. And this large box of rental by client with no ongoing housing subsidy, that means that young people were able to stabilize in a sustainable unit without needing additional help beyond the point of intervention. So that's a really exciting program and resource that we have here that we're seeing really great results with.
And as Cecily mentioned, we have this data from the last year with our youth and young adults. And because it worked so well with our youth and young adults, on Tuesday of next week, we are actually launching our Single Adults and Veterans Centralized Diversion Fund, which we will be able to employ, deploy money, excuse me, in the same way that the youth and young adults or our older individuals in our system, and we're hoping to see and expecting to see similar levels of success. And while we have a small pot of money to start with, we're hoping to see that because we're successful in this, we can expand that and really save individuals from going through the coordinated entry system when their needs are not going to be met by that system, and also save money throughout our system. So also, other ways that we are looking ahead is we are, as I mentioned, we're really working on our by-name list for our single adults, as well as getting an automated process for our youth and young adults that we're able to be able to, we're able to pull this data on a more-than-monthly basis that we have even more real-time data of what homelessness is looking like in our community. We are looking to expand our diversion funds and make a diversion-wide system in Spokane, known as the diversion-first system, along with our housing-first system. We are looking to pinpoint areas of QT BIPOC equity issues in the housing systems and address disparity across, and disproportionality across our system. Community leadership and stakeholder collaboration is something that we're really looking to expand upon and get more individuals understanding that Built for Zero is not just a side project, but it's something that we can get the whole community and really meets up with our strategic plans for change and ending homelessness here in Spokane. We have case conferencing, and case conferencing is expanding and growing and becoming even more of a valuable part of our community. And we have providers asking for more case conferencing, which I have never seen a homeless services provider ask for another meeting to be added to their schedule until we have case conferencing, and they're really seeing the value out of that. And then we have investment in people with lived experience and putting them in leadership positions. Both Cecily and I, through the, through these programs, have the ability to stipend people with lived experience to come to the table and really pay them for their subject matter expertise and treat them in an equitable way, rather than kind of tokenizing or just bringing them to the table and taking advantage of the knowledge that comes from being a person with recent lived experience. And then, of course, we want to reduce. We want to use our data-driven and community-informed methods so that we can continue to see reductions in homelessness across our system. So we wanted to give you a little bit of time to ask any other questions, and then my email is up here. Cecily is getting ready to transition into a position with Away Home Washington so that she can continue coaching other communities and continue the success. So I will be the main contact person until our new Anchor Community Initiative Coordinator comes on board here in a couple weeks.
Council, any questions?
Yes, so Morgan, Councilman Wilkerson here. First of all, I applaud you for the leadership in stipending people who support and acknowledging their lived experience. I've been looking and listening, where the city fits in all this, and what role are we playing? Or are we not at this table?
That's a really great question. So both of these initiatives were actually brought here in partnership with the city of Spokane. So we have a, you know, MOU and contract with the city of Spokane. The city of Spokane is in a lead position with the Anchor Community Initiative, so each ACI has a coordinator and a lead that's designated. Matt Davis was our designated city of Spokane lead, but our lead position has been vacant since his departure. Built for Zero has a similar contract, an MOU with the city of Spokane, to be designated as a lead. That has been challenging, given the current circumstances and staffing levels. But these initiatives actually were brought here by the city. So the city of Spokane approached the United Way two years ago and asked them to host MyPosition as an ACI coordinator, seeing the value of having a neutral entity be in a coordination seat and wanting to partner. So the United Way was asked to host the ACI coordinator position, and then because of the success of this work, Built for Zero or Community Solutions approached the city again and asked if they would be interested in bringing, because veterans was already on board, bringing singles and chronic to the table. The city agreed and similarly approached the United Way to add this coordinating capacity. So we are in a relationship with them and also navigating what that means, giving staffing. Both Morgan and I are embedded on the CHHS staff team, and I've been working on that team for about two years now.
Councilmember Catcart, do you have questions? I just want to say, that is probably the best-kept secret at City Hall. This is the first time I've heard about that, and I applaud you all. So for two years, has any other council member heard about this? Or am I the only one that's been in?
I've heard about it.
Okay, so we've got one who has. I applaud you, and I would, Melissa, are you the point person that can get us more information on this? Or do I reach out to Morgan directly? How do we do that?
So Melissa has our contact information. You are also welcome to reach out to me directly, and I can send more information. Cecily and I are working to put together a packet of resources and some more reading materials on the work that we're doing, and we will be sending that along probably today or tomorrow so that we can get you engaged in that way, and I will make sure to include my email in that.
And are you, do you have the ability to tailor your presentation shorter to a group that's more constructed on time?
Yeah, so I, we present to different groups. We have worked with our Better Health Together team. We have worked with many different community organizations across the city, and we are able to kind of fit in anywhere from ten to, an hour, ten minutes to an hour. We find that ten minutes is really, in order to explain Functional Zero well and get a good grasp of what we're doing, ten minutes is really kind of the minimum time that we need, but we're able to be flexible with that.
Super, thank you. Councilmember Wilkerson, go ahead.
Thank you again, because I was unaware that you're embedded with the city. So I just am challenged on your data capturing. We hear so much that there's different data and how it's used and who's using it for whatever purpose. How have you all been able to knit that together, I believe, for the best outcome or the best information to make some of these decisions?
Yeah, that is a great question. Cecily, do you want to take it or do you want me to?
I mean, I think we both have a lot to say on that, so if you want to go first, then I'll jump in. So I think you can talk about data all day, so stop us.
We can. So we do use the data that's already present within our HMIS and CMIS system here in Spokane because that is a comprehensive look at anybody who's receiving city funding. We also have some partnerships with agencies like UGM or other non-CMIS participating organizations, and they send us some of their de-identified data so that we can include that in a snapshot of what we're doing on a month-to-month basis. So we try to look at comprehensive data through those partnerships and through the CMIS system, and then pull it and disaggregate it on a month-to-month or more frequent basis so that we can get a real-time video. A lot of times we hear, like, using the point in time count, that's really a snapshot when a community needs a video to be able to see what is happening, rather than just that one night, because different factors really affect what is able to be seen on a one-night basis. And then we try to make sure that we're also using the data to look at disproportionality and be able to... and be able to develop it in different ways. I have a little bit of a data analytics background, so I use Tableau to really transform and be able to communicate what we're seeing in our data on a month-to-month basis.
I think that's really, I think that's also really where the possibilities in this lie is, you know, so the youth by name list, it took us, my supervisor Andre here heard me talk quite a bit about the trials and tribulations of building a logic flow, an intricate logic flow for data. I think we have a 30-page logic document of how to transform and export from HMIS into usable data. That has since turned into a partnership with Away Home Washington where we built a tool in Tableau that allows us to run that report in 10 seconds. So it's really, it's been an evolution of how we can use this information. I think a shout-out is very much in order to the CMIS team, David Lewis and Daniel Ramos in particular, who really worked with us to build that capacity both within the CMIS system, but also identify where we needed outside resources, so working with an outside data consultant. I just, team, excuse my dog. And that is also where I think we can really use some investment and see where there's a lot of value.
This is great. Councilmembers, anything else you want to ask? We know, we know we can get ahold of them at any time, so they're not going away. Yes, go ahead, please.
My name is Andre Muzachenko here and I just want to give shout-out to my colleagues, Morgan and Cecily, for doing a wonderful job of representing this work, engaging the community. They air ground with folks living with lived experience. And I just want to give shout-out to the City of Spokane for being courageous to take on these projects, to be part of functional zero initiatives. And the United Way has been a partner for the last two years. We're now with this work of Built for Zero and we're excited to continue to work together. I also encourage to continue to ask the difficult questions because this work eventually will address some of the policy questions and, you know, the data is not just to stay there, but it will mean hard questions will be asked. So I encourage you to continue to do the hard work and thanks for giving us the time to just share what we've been up to.
Thanks so much. And likewise, if you all need to get in touch with any of us, feel free to do so. Call us or email us if you have questions or need more support. So thank you all. And with that, we're going to transition to ARPA. And Betsy, you're the only ARPA person we have on this. Did you want to say something?
I will just say that we are finalizing our thought proposal form that will go live here shortly. We have received some ideas that council will be looking at funding and as we all know, the biggest concern is around housing. So I believe that'll be one of the first issues that we tackle in the city with these funds. And if you were listening to our finance department's presentation, there are some funds that we need to replenish in the city. So, you know, we're really taking a holistic approach. It's not just us in City Hall, but it's the community as well, so more to come.
So my ask is, and you and I have talked about this, my ask is because of the community, people are asking all of us, what's going on with that money? I think my ask would be, can we engage Lisa Gardner to put something out every week? Here is our progress, here is what we're doing. I think that's really important because people are just unsure of what's going on. It's the big mystery. And I don't know if other council members have similar thoughts on that. Please, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess for me, I just hope that we at least have some sense of kind of what the other submissions or ideas are before we agree on, you know, large expenditures because I think we have to prioritize, figure out kind of what makes sense. And so if we're going to allocate, you know, a big amount towards one item or kind of one sector, it would be nice to know kind of at what cost to other things are we doing that and to have a better sense of that prioritization, what all has been submitted, what's been asked. I think that that needs to be something that we kind of think about as we make those decisions.
And I see that Hannah just said that we'll get to see all of those. I'm just so grateful I'm not on that committee, but we will see all of those. So and I, Betsy, I thank you for your hard work on this. Kate, did you have any questions about ARPA funds?
Um, I don't think so, just kind of waiting to see what comes up and happy to contribute in any ways, so.
Okay, perfect. I noticed that our two, Mr. Donovan and Mr. Boston, have appeared as if by magic. Did you have anything to contribute to this conversation or did you have questions?
No, nothing really to contribute. I mean, just, we've been listening to the study session and as it relates to ARPA things, what councilmember Cathcart said, that collective list is going to be shared to all of council and talked about during these study sessions in the near future. As it relates to Lisa's communication going outward, I believe that's happening, that's in the works as well.
Super. Did you have comments on anything else pertaining to study sessions or shall we just leave that for one-on-ones?
Nope, we were just here for any questions that you might have as it relates to ARPA or the presentation that happened this morning.
Council, did you have questions for our two finance losers? No? Okay. And I am compiling a list of questions and I will submit them because it's too long to go into here, so I will submit them. So thanks. Anything else for the good of the order? Otherwise, we'll see you all tomorrow for another fun sale day of budget. Anything? Okay, great. Have a great rest of afternoon and we'll see you all tomorrow. Thank you.